Good morning Birmingham, good morning City Council. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is January 18th, 2022, the time is 9:31. At this time, if you will join us for invocation by Chief Sparks and the pledge of allegiance will be held by Councilor Hunter Williams. If you'll please stand, thank you.
Join if you will in a moment of prayer. Father God, we come right now thanking you first of all for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We know, Father, that it's by nothing that we've done but only by your grace and your mercy that we've been allowed to assemble. We thank you, Father, for the things that oftentimes we seem to take for granted. The ability to awaken our right state of mind. We know there are those that awoke this morning and did not know who nor whose they were. We thank you for the means that we have to feed and clothe ourselves. We thank you for the ability to fellowship. We thank you for those things that we oftentimes seem to take for granted. We pray now, Father, for your choice blessings on this council, on our mayor, on this administration. We ask that you decrease us and increase you. Help all of the things that we do to be decent and in order. We ask that you forgive us for our many sins. We ask that you guide us in the way that you would have us to go. Help our decisions to be reflective of your good name and your goodwill. And, Father, at the end, we'll be careful to give you all the praise, glory, and honor. Keep us and protect us, lead God and direct us. It's these and many other blessings we ask in your son's name and for his sake. Let's all say together, amen.
Amen.
Attention, all of us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you very much and thank you so much, Chief, for that very beautiful prayer. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Yes ma'am, good morning.
Good morning.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate.
Present, good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Councilmember Woods. President Pro Tem Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. And Council President Alexander.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, the minutes are not ready for the meetings of August 17th, 2021, through January 11th, 2022. Do we have any communications from the mayor, Chief?
No communications from the mayor this morning, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies that we need to announce?
No ma'am, we don't have any yet.
Alright, thank you. At this time, council will consider the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, if you'll lead us in that discussion.
The consent agenda begins on page two with items one, two, three, and four. On page three, items five, six, and seven. Page four, items eight and nine. Page five, items 12 and 13. Page six, items 14, 15, 16, and 17. Page seven, items 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. Page eight, items 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. Page nine, items 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34. Page 10, items 35, 36, 37, 38, 39. Page 11, items 40, 41, 42, 43. Page 12, items 44, 45, 46, and 47. Page 13, items 48, 49, 50, and 51. And page 14, item 52, and that completes our consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Counselors, at this time, will entertain any additions or deletions you have for the consent agenda.
Madam President, I would like to add item number three to be placed on consent, please.
Okay, that's item number three on page two that's been requested to add to consent.
We have one person who wants to speak to that on the speakers list.
Is that right? Okay, thank you. Is that okay? Alright. So we'll continue to allow that to be off consent, so we'll allow that speaker. Thank you for making that.
Could you tell me which item that was?
Number three.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Alright. Want that off the consent agenda?
It's not, we were gonna, trying to put it on, but it's already off. Okay? So we don't want it on.
Well, item two is on. Item three is a public hearing.
Right.
That's correct.
Well, they're both public hearings.
But one's on.
Madam President, I suggest we take item two off of consent as well.
Alright. Alright, so at this time, we're taking item two off consent. And we'll keep, item three will also be not on consent. Thank you. Any other items, counselors? Yes. Request is that item 13 on page five is taken off consent. Alright, any other items? Right, at this time, I'll read the statement regarding consideration of consent agenda. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Second.
Counselor Williams. I'm sorry, Ms. the second.
You can say pro tem, just part of that.
Thank you. Voting has started. My iPad isn't working, Brian. Counselor Abbott.
Mine's not working either, but I.
Alright, thank you. The consent agenda passes. First item.
Okay, the first item will be, or items will be on page two, items two and three. Would you like them both read since they go together?
Yes, please.
Item two is a resolution relative to the application of Country Club Inc. for a lounge retail liquor class more license to be used at Country Club, 1157 Bankhead Highway West, Birmingham. And this is the hearing of our interested parties. Item three is a resolution relative to the application of Maurice King for a Division One dance permit to be used at Country Club, 1157 Bankhead Highway West, Birmingham. And this is also a hearing of our interested parties.
Thank you very much. Both of these items were recommended by the Public Safety Committee, so I'll ask Ms. Tate to conduct these two items. And do we have a motion? I'm sorry. Thank you. Now, Counselor Tate, we just have someone here that wants to speak to the item.
It's the person that want to speak to the Country Club.
Good morning, if you give us your name and address, thank you.
Hey, good morning, my name is Amy Wager.
We can't hear you.
You want me to take my mask down, was that helpful? Would that be better?
Or if you just speak until it either way, whichever way you feel comfortable.
Good morning, my name is Amy Wager, my address is 1075 Belvedere Cove. My question about the Country Club and concern is that there's an application for a Division One dance permit. Does that mean that this is a strip club?
No, they're on the request, it's a, it's an entertainment venue that has pool tables.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They rent it out to have events, but it's not a strip club.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, in the thing, it says Division One dance permit.
Division Two, it's not one.
Okay, so it's not going to be.
No ma'am, it's not that at all.
Okay.
It is Division One, but that's regular dance, and the Division Two would be your strip club dance.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Division One is regular dance, Two is the strip club, but.
Okay.
It's not a strip club. They have pool tables there. We did send Officer, Detective Pitts back out to conduct, you know, surveillance there. They, it has a few issues there, so they had to provide me with a great public safety plan. And so that's what they bought before me. So it's a club, it's an entertainment venue that has pool tables, it's been in existence, but someone, Maurice King is somebody that's taken over, you know, the venue now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? That was the only speaker that was. Yes, Counselor.
Why are they not applying with a pool table?
That's why we was moving to consent.
Well, if they're operating pool tables, they have to have a pool table license. So why, I'm confused now.
Okay, so could we get the city attorney or someone to clarify?
Pool permits don't come through the city council, they're not approved through the city council. They're approved a different way.
They're approved through the mayor's office.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, does that clear up?
Yeah. I thought we voted on them.
I thought so too.
But I guess that changed.
If you'll allow, Counselor, the public, the Chair of that committee, go ahead and speak, ma'am, thank you.
Well, we did, they did come back before us and Pro Tem Smitherman and Counsel Williams, we referred it back to public safety for two weeks for them to get some things cleared up. So they came back before us in public safety meeting last Tuesday and met all of the requirements that we were, we had them to address. So everything is okay with Country Club, it's not a strip club, it's an entertainment venue that's used to, you know, host events. And so Detective Pitts went back out, they met the requirements, and I'm satisfied with the requirements.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And we're not using the keypad, I know yours wasn't working, Ms. Abbott, but if we could use the keypad to request to speak, it would help me.
I do.
And mine isn't showing though, so I hope I have the right keypad. Go ahead, Ms. Abbott, thank you.
And I wanted to ask about the pool table permit because the council used to, the council used to approve pool table permits, why would the mayor approve them?
Madam President.
Who made that change?
Well, I don't, I don't want to say that anybody made the change, but we'll verify, we'll finance the proper protocol for pool table permit signage.
Yeah, because we approved bingo permits and pool tables and dance permits and.
We will confirm with financing, the Office of the City Attorney, and give a response.
Yeah, that would be weird. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Clark.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to speak in support of the establishment continuing to operate as it has in the past. It is in District Eight, it's one of my favorite places to go, and the dancing, first of all, I love live music and they tend to present blues and have a really adult crowd. And it's a great place, if you're single, you can dance, you can line dance during the music, the live performance breaks, so. So it's one of my favorite places to go and I look forward to going again, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark, that actually just changed my vote. Because I want to see you line dance.
Okay, it's a date.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselors. Any other discussion about this item? We have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes ma'am, the vote has started.
Thank you.
Your vote. That vote should be up.
Thank you very much. Items two and three pass. Next item.
The next item is item number 10. It's on page four. An ordinance amending Title IV Municipal Services, Chapter Five Streets and Sidewalks, Article Five, excuse me, Article K. Establishment, operation, maintenance of outdoor cafes of the General Code of the City of Birmingham to further provide for permits for outdoor cafe and other business operations in the public right-of-way. This item is an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion on the item.
Any discussion on this item? Madam Chair, a public improvement.
This is really about kind of like eating the street, so giving restaurants the opportunity to have tables on the sidewalks and kind of outside, that's basically it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Quinn.
Yes, I just wanted to add that this was also recommended by the Transportation Committee.
Thank you very much. So we need to add that. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes ma'am, it's.
I had one, one question, and that is, how much of the public sidewalk is supposed to remain unblocked when these people have their outdoor dining? No, it's five, if you put it in the middle of the sidewalk, you have to leave five feet free. Does that include the parking meters or?
Chief, do you have an answer? Thank you.
I think it stands all the way until the actual designation for a parking spot location up to five feet. I could be wrong, but I think Counselor Quinn can speak on it, or we can have Christina Argo kind of speak about it.
And who polices it? When people expand their dining a little more than they should have.
It's in conjunction with Department of Transportation and PEP and code enforcement.
Everybody, which means nobody.
And I'll just ask our Chair of Transportation, do you have any other additional information you can add to kind of clarify and give clarity?
Yeah, so this, as you recall, we, this public space permitting process really came about as a way to help businesses during, you know, the coronavirus, worst parts of the coronavirus pandemic, and move some of their activities outdoors. And at the time that it was established, it was a one-time permitting, so this actually makes the process annual. So the establishments will have to apply to renew their permit each year. And the Department of Transportation is going to administer it, which will require the establishment to provide, you know, like a diagram of the layout. It has some design guidelines so that you can't use like burn barrels or something like that as barricades and that sort of thing. So it's an improvement, but to the specific question about maintaining the pedestrian, five feet of pedestrian space on the sidewalk, Department of Transportation is here and I'm sure they can give more specifics as to what portion of the sidewalk is to remain open.
Thank you, Chief. Do you have someone that could see transportation here?
Right, both James Fowler and Christina Argo, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Argo, good morning.
Good morning. Now, Argo, the Department of Transportation.
We could get a new one. How about it, y'all?
There you go, thank you.
The microphone from here.
Christina Argo, Department of Transportation. And the question was about ADA clearance.
The question was regarding the width and the amount of area that is allowed when the restaurant sets up that outdoor dining.
So they must maintain a five-foot clearance for ADA accessibility, and we're very clear about that in the ordinance, ordinance and in the design guidelines.
And I believe the follow-up question was, how is that monitored or how is that enforced? Or is there anyone that goes around and determines that that seating meets that requirement?
Absolutely. So we've really strengthened this ordinance. BDOT is now going to be responsible for enforcing the ordinance, and it calls for a yearly permitting fee, which also triggers that yearly inspection. And so we have inspectors on our team that will be inspecting and enforcing the ordinance on a yearly basis.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott, I believe you asked that question, is that clarified?
That's the only complaint I've ever heard, is that they encroach into the five feet, so if you're in a wheelchair or have a baby carriage or something, you know, you have trouble getting past other people. And then sometimes the parking meters, they seem to think that that's included in the five feet, so people, you know, have to make their way around parking. That's the only complaint I've heard about the outdoor dining was.
Thank you.
Insufficient space being left for pedestrians.
Thank you, Ms. Argo, I think you have one more question, Ms. Clark.
And I can think of a few who obviously didn't go through the permitting process because they take over the whole sidewalk from.
We've got some cleanup to do.
From the storefront to the curb. And if you want to walk through there, you'd have to, I would walk really close to their building to get through or walk out in the street. So the, I would think the five feet of clearance is the portion closest to the curb between the parking meter or the tree grate and the barrier for the outdoor permit.
It does, it can vary depending on what the streetscape looks like, but, you know, so there's no really hard rule about where that five feet is. But as long as you have the five feet.
So it could be closer to the building.
It could.
Edge.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Because I can, I can, I can think of some of that.
Thank you. Any other questions or need for clarification?
I have, is this working?
It's not working, so if you'll just let me know. Mr. Williams.
Hey, so if this is an annual permit, how does that interact with the ABC Board? Because they're supposed to be able to serve alcohol, and if it's done annualized, how is that going to interact with the ABC Board?
So we do reference in the ordinance and in the guidelines that they have to work with the ABC Board on the licensing, the liquor licensing portion. And I'm not exactly sure how the ABC Board, or Julie.
Because that seems like that that's going to be a real problem for those businesses.
I was going to ask, do we need some clarification from the city attorney's office or how you want to handle it?
Julie is on line. Attorney Bernard E. is on the line.
Alright, Attorney Bernard, if you can hear us, I don't know if we need to restate that question.
Okay, yeah, I think I understood the question. Attorney Bernard is the city attorney, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. The, that will not be an issue, but this is just an amendment of the outdoor cafe permit, which has, you know, been continuing. The permit to use the right-of-way is the city's decision. If they have an ABC license, and they will have to show that as part of their licensed premises, but if we, you know, revoke their permission to use that sidewalk, the ABC Board will have to be informed, but it will not be like it's something they'll have to do annually with the ABC Board. They have to renew their ABC Board license annually anyway.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bernard. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Argo, we're ready for the vote. Thank you.
The vote has started.
Thank you very much, Counselors, that item passes, number 10 passes. Next item.
The next item is item number 11 on page four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority and the City of Birmingham for the purchase and installation of the passenger information technology systems and passenger information display systems at both transit centers and all 32 transit stations, and provide marketing services to support the Birmingham Express BRT project, using the TIGA grant funds in the amount of $547,686 and city matching funds in the amount of $547,686, for a total amount not to exceed $1,095,372. And again, this is an item of permanent operation, so we will need unanimous consent.
I move for you, C.
That was a second by Ms. Tate.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
Alright, thank you, Counselors, this item is before us. Any questions regarding item number 11? This was recommended by the mayor and the Budget and Finance Committee. Alright, thank you, we're ready for the vote.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Did it go to the Transportation Committee also, or just Budget and Finance?
According to this Budget and Finance, Counselor, did that come to your committee? This is 11, with the BCI. Alright, thank you, so we need to clarify. Thank you very much for asking for that. Alright, Counselors, we're ready for the vote, thank you.
The vote has started. Counselor Quinn.
Thank you very much, Counselors, that motion passes, that item passes. Next item.
The next item is item number 13 on page five. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a funding agreement with the Birmingham Jefferson County Port Authority, under which the BJCPA will provide for the operation of an inland port facility on the Black Warrior River for recreational, transportational, agricultural, industrial, and commercial purposes and other professional services as needed to carry out its duties and responsibilities and other services that are required to fulfill the intent of the Port Authority Act as defined in Chapter 94 of Title 11 of the Code of Alabama 1975, and the purpose of the funding agreement and, and the purpose of the funding agreement. And the city will pay the BJCPA an amount not to exceed $125,000 for such services provided that such funding has been approved and included in the city's general fund budget for FY 2021 to 2022.
Move the item.
Second.
Alright, thank you, is there any discussion on this item, Counselor Williams?
Madam President, I'm thinking of motion that we send this to Economic Development and Tourism.
Thank you. I do want to make the council aware that there was a presentation planned tomorrow for the committee of the whole forum. for the Committee of the Whole Forum, the Port Authority. So would you like to consider that discussion at that time? Or you wanted to still go back to economic development?
We're meeting today. We can boot them forward to Committee of the Whole. But we need to confirm that the Port Authority is going to be able to show up.
We'll do that. Thank you. I did have some communication with them, and they were asking for their time allowance for that meeting. But I will confirm, seeing now that we wanted to get that in front of economic development. Thank you all very much. So we will then move this item. Since we do have that discussion coming up with Committee of the Whole, we'll delay this item until after we have that discussion. Do you want to do a one-week delay?
Well, yeah, I guess we could delay this specific item. I was on the committee, but yeah, we could delay it.
Okay, so we just sent it to committee. We can just send it to committee. That'll be fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So our vote then will be to send this to the Economic Development Committee. Ms. Clark, you seem like you have a question.
I was just saying, I would second his motion to refer to committee.
All right, councilors, thank you.
Economic Development?
Yes.
Okay, the vote has started.
Thank you.
Counselor Woods. That vote should be up.
Thank you, councilors. So we've moved this item 13 to the Economic Development Committee. Next item.
The next item is item 53. Item 53 is on page 14. A resolution setting a public hearing February 15, 2022, to consider the adoption of a resolution assenting to the vacation of 1,997 square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Sixth Avenue South and Seventh Avenue South and perpendicular to and between 19th Street South and 20th Street South on behalf of the University of Alabama at Birmingham owner, so that the owner can consolidate the property. And this is case number issue B 2021-00081.
Move the item. So move. It was me and Counsel Williams.
Thank you so much. The voting has started.
Thank you.
Counselor Woods. Okay, that vote is up.
Thank you very much, councilors. So we have moved that, set that public hearing for February 15, 2022. Thank you. Councilors, at this time, we did have an addendum item, and we have an item for UC.
We've got one more.
We have one more. You've got to call your 54. Sorry. Trying to get ahead of you.
Item 54 is receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to the boiler replacement at the Cross Place. And there's no action that needs to be taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilors, we did have one addendum item, and we also have an item for UC. And both of these items are relative to the council's plans to move forward with redistricting of our nine districts. According to our ordinances, we do have to look at our districts, our nine electoral districts, as a result of the current census. So we received that census data, and now it's time for us to undertake that action. So if you'll read that first item, it's an ordinance that would need the UC. And this sets the funding source for that item.
All right.
I move for UC.
It's an ordinance to amend the COVID state and local fiscal recovery fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022 by appropriating $175,000 to Mayor's Office for City of Birmingham redistributing her funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act.
And before we take a vote, that is recommended by the mayor and Strike Budget and Finance Committee. You'll correct that as far as the recommendation for this item. To entertain a motion?
Second.
All in, I'm sorry, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So move.
All right, any discussion on this particular item? Counselor?
Just one, and I assume that this has been vetted, but is redistricting one of the allowable uses of recovery money? Or is it just considered to be like general administration?
So, Madam President, we checked with legal counsel and Ms. Amelia Moeller, who is over, that ARP funding. So we did check with the final ruling that this is allowable use, that we can do this.
Well, I would like to assume that, but I don't want to assume anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for administration? We're ready for the vote.
The vote has started.
Thank you, councilors. That motion passes. So that puts in place the funds for the next item, which is an addendum item. If you'll read that for us, Madam?
Yes, ma'am. It's a resolution pursuant to Section 2-2-62 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham appointing Crem Card, please take the E out, Consulting Services LLC to carry out the process of reviewing, and if necessary, withdrawing the council district lines in accordance with recognized legal standards for an amount not to exceed $175,000 from January 3, 2022 to March 30, 2022, and authorizing the mayor to execute the appointment letter.
So move.
All right, councilors, thank you. We'll entertain questions about this item. I do just want to state that this is a consulting service that, as a part of professional services, we were seeking consultants who had dealt with redistricting before. You have before you the resume, as well as the appointment letter that describes some of the services that Crem Card has performed, as well as the owner of that service who will be conducting this. So any questions from councilors? Ms. Clark?
No. I would just say, it looks like you found someone really credible in this area of work. And will Doug Turner also be?
Yes, that will be Doug Turner will also be working with this consultant. And it's a two-step process. Of course, we receive the information from the census, and then we have to compare it to our current mapping. And then we will be looking at information as far as race, population, that fell out from our districts from the census. And so Dr. Creighton has worked with Los Angeles and other municipalities in this particular effort. Thank you.
It looks like a stellar team to lead us. Thanks.
Any other questions? We're ready for the vote. Thank you.
The voting has started. And that vote should be up.
Thank you very much, and thank you, councilors. And just for general purposes for the public, there will be a redistricting committee meeting today at 1:00. This is where we'll take up this item. There'll be more information regarding the consultant, the process that we'll undertake, the timeline that we'll use to get this information. It does have to be certified with the clerk's office. And so we'll be talking with various people that will be part of this process during our redistricting committee meeting tomorrow. There's also a meeting for the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday after our committee meets, and we'll be presenting this information to the entire council. I have invited the president of the Board of Education and those members, since our redistricting does affect also the Board of Education districts and how they sit. So they have been invited as well. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, councilors. Any other items? Let me go through the agenda.
That completes items on the council.
Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, we do have speakers that have... Sorry, we do have some presentations. And so we'll go ahead. I'll ask for a suspension of the rule, and we'll allow those presentations at this time. We need to vote. Motion for suspension of the rule. You have a check-in? I'll stack it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. This is to give the human trafficking free zone proclamation. I think Chief Sparks is going to come up with me and do the mayor's side. But I know we have some guests here. If you all want to come up to the podium with us, social distancing. Thank you.
You know, Counselor Protem has on her blue today, which I know is one of the colors. And we're all, somehow we got that memo too, Counselor. Thank you.
She's on her blue eyes.
She's blue-eyed, so she's with us. Thank you, Counselor.
So, councilors, back in 2019, no, a couple of you weren't here, we declared Birmingham and the World Games a human trafficking free zone. Originally, it was for 2021 because that was before COVID-19 hit. This is really just to have another proclamation to say for 2022, we will continue to make sure the World Games is a human trafficking free zone. I think it's very important with having several countries coming here today. I don't know if you guys have kept up, but down in Montgomery, there was a recent story. I learned through Junior League that a five-year-old girl was actually trafficked by her mother, and she was found dead in Montgomery. So this may not be something we may not hear every day, but this is an issue that is very important to me and hopefully still is, Councilman Mayor Woodfin. We are making steps moving forward to make sure that we continue to train our employers, et cetera, what we declared in 2019. Sorry, I got about four up here, two from us and two from the mayor. It's this one? Okay, "Whereas the Council of the City of Birmingham seeks to enhance public welfare, protect public safety, and promote human flourishing for all residents and visitors by declaring that freedom from human trafficking is a fundamental human right. Whereas the World Games 2022 in Birmingham is an international sporting event that will bring thousands of athletes, as well as countless tourists and media, to the Birmingham metro area. An increase in tourists seeking entertainment, including commercial sex, increases the potential risks for exploitation and human trafficking. And whereas we continue our efforts to make this city a trafficking-free zone by combating the human trafficking of our children and vulnerable adults and mitigating the associated public safety, economic, and health risks to our community in collaboration with the Child Trafficking Solutions Program and other anti-human trafficking organizations by combating labor trafficking, servitude, and commercial sex exploitation through comprehensive education of our staff, the enforcement of a zero-tolerance policy against any act which may support human trafficking, and supporting collaborative, community-based solutions across a continuum that includes prevention, recovery of victims, and prosecution of perpetrators, and asks all citizens of the City of Birmingham to join us in promoting a shift away from the culture of tolerance towards human trafficking. Now therefore be resolved that the City of the, the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberations in recognition of National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and determine the City of Birmingham to be a trafficking-free zone presented this 18th day of January 2022 at the recommendation of Council President Protem, Crystal Anne Smith.
Thank you very much.
Someone from Junior League or? Yeah, if you want to say just a couple.
So I'm Amy Wager, and from the Child Trafficking Solutions Project. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to the city council and also to the mayor for partnering with us. We do have, as you may all be aware, we do have a very large human trafficking problem here in this state and here in this city. I do a lot of work with survivors, one-on-one, both with children and adults who are being trafficked. And hence my question earlier, because we do a lot of work in strip clubs, too. So anyway, we just wanted to say thank you so much. Here in the Birmingham metro area, Department of Homeland Security estimates that it is a $110 million a year industry for the commercial sex exploitation, or, excuse me, commercial sex industry. So we have a large portion of this area that's paying for sex. And anything that we can do to help eradicate slavery and eradicate people being in bondage like this, it's really crucial. So we thank you so much for being able to do this and for partnering with us. It means so much, and it will help provide so much training for those who need this training. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Counselor, we'll move for unanimous consent so we can put this in the record, our resolution. Yes, ma'am. So move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Announce the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor Woodfin.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, we do have the speaker's list, and we do have one person that signed up to speak. So Madam Clerk, if you'll read that name.
That name is Eric Nguyen.
As the speaker comes forward, I just want to remind everyone of about three minutes to speak to the council. And we'll ask you, Mr. Nguyen, if you'll go ahead, and we'll start that clock. And thank you.
Madam President, how y'all doing? Good morning.
Good morning.
I came today to apologize to the remaining council members that I wasn't able to apologize to directly for my outbursts maybe a month ago. As you can see, since 2017, since 2016, since I was released, just kind of leading this fight to change the mindset of the youth in the community is the most stressful thing, being from my neighborhood. It's why I wake up every day for the last five years. It's why I wake up every day to change the mindset of the youth. And I just wanted to make sure that this council knows, the mayor, I want to apologize, to make sure he knows that, you know, my frustration is not directed toward this body of leadership that I believe in, this body of leadership. But it doesn't change what we're seeing in our communities, not just in Birmingham. A 16-year-old was just murdered in Tuscaloosa. It was a trap. I'm trying to keep up with three minutes. I'm very uncomfortable here. I'm more comfortable in those environments where I should be at, where maybe Madam President might not be too comfortable in those environments, Gate City, Kingston, Avondale, Avondale, those environments where kids are being conditioned to think that gun violence is cool, where gun violence is how you resolve conflict. I've been saying this for five years. That's why we're seeing so much senseless violence all over America, because the music is conditioning in our youth. So we need people, individuals, movement in those environments, changing the culture, leading the charge, to drill the message of unity in their heads. Organizations like War, mentorships, programs like C4, D2B, strap organization. What we don't have the luxury of is time. We go to those schools, and we unfortunately have to leave. And those kids who we're trying to reach, who are growing up in those environments, they have all the time in the world to listen to NBA Youngboy, listen to Lil Dirk. That's why all these rappers, their name starts with like NBA Youngboy, Lil Dirk, Young Dog, to kind of cater to the youth, the more potential at risk to think guns are cool, gun violence is cool. So I'm trying to, the three minutes is up. I want to make sure you guys know. But I want to make sure you guys know, I apologize, I am going to continue, I lost my twin brother, and that's why I'm gonna be doing this tie-dye, trying to change the mindset, get kids to understand. The most creative, most effective way we've been able to impact our communities is by giving kids shirts, because although we leave organizations like Strapp, we leave these schools, when we give those shirts to those kids in those communities, that message sticks with them. See, we want the message of war to stick with these kids, not me. So it's not more, more my presence in Gate City, it's the presence of war in Gate City with the young children, the ones that will eventually end up like the older children. Five people have been murdered just from that one neighborhood. So you can tell where the direction of where we're going. I appreciate the support I've got from this Council. I know the time's up. I'm in the process of getting with a team to propose to you guys some things we want to do to continue that fight, and I just want to let you guys know, I appreciate you, and I apologize. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Thank you. At this time, Counselors, we're entertaining comments, and I know that we have a proposal on a way that we could sort of streamline our comments, and so I'm gonna, and how we present them. And so, a suggestion that came from our Public Information Committee. So I think what we'll do, we'll go through all of our comments, and we'll end with you, Counselor Woods, okay? All right, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm still kinda coming down from yesterday. So we had a pretty awesome day of service yesterday in District Eight. I started out at the Bush Hills Community Garden and Urban Farm. There was a team of Americor vistas who are assigned to City Hall who were out preparing the, the community garden beds and also planting some kale and different things. But it was really delightful to spend, spend a little time with them before the Five Points West Community Cleanup, which I think was probably bigger than I ever imagined, where over 200 volunteers registered for the event, and so many of the neighborhood people did not register. So, you know, it was just a lot of people out working in six neighborhoods. And so the registration process was supported by Eventbrite and Hands-on Birmingham. Those portals, you know, allowed us to register volunteers. But we had teams all over Bellevue Heights, Bush Hills, Central Park, Ensley Highlands, Fairview, and Green Acres. And the Business Alliance was there, Alabama Power was there, I mean, the Black Warrior River Keepers, Miles College Center team, Ramsey sent their tennis team. But I mean, I know I'm leaving a lot of people out because I just didn't know everybody. So they were just, it was just really wonderful yesterday. Later on in the afternoon at Bush Hills Urban Farm, we had the Bar Association. So they've sort of made it a tradition to come out, and the work we've been able to accomplish between the Urban Farm and the Community Garden is just pretty outstanding, because it was actually four days of service. So yesterday ended four days of service. So still pretty high from that, but. And the cleanup in Five Points West really kicked off a series. So we're gonna try to follow the footsteps of District One and District Five and, and other districts who've, who are having regular cleanup events and partner with our neighborhoods. They won't be as big as what we did yesterday. We'll just kinda target a neighborhood, and hopefully some of those same volunteers will come out. So moving on to this week, tonight, we have the Green Acres Neighborhood Meeting. Let me see if I can find it quickly. It's at 6:30 PM at the Lifting Christ Worship Center located at 1000, I'm sorry, 1001 Pine View Road. That's the Green Acres Neighborhood Meeting tonight at 6:30. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. And I do want to offer you and your neighborhood kudos. I did come out and witnessed, it was so nice going down Bismarck Superhighway before even getting to the Crossplex. You had people as close as Midfield out there working in the area. So I think you must have hit every inch of your district, and so it was really exciting. I know yesterday was a day, what is the day off and the day on, not a day off? So we're excited to see the people that joined in with you. And I think I said, we're gonna try to reproduce what you did. So thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor. Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to compliment Counselor Clark also. She really showed out. And, but I also want to thank all the people, the other, you know, people in the city who came out and just performed various acts of public service. And I wanted to remind everybody that there are 364 other days a year where we need to be doing these kind of things. You know, anything you do to help the city and help your community is worthwhile. Even if you just pick up one piece of trash off the ground, it's helpful. So, and we've got so much litter, you might have to pick up two or three. But anyway, the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting will be held on January 26 at 3:30 PM. And tonight, the neighborhood meeting is Five Points South, and they meet at 6:00 PM at the Highlands United Methodist Church, and it's an in-person meeting. Tomorrow, January 19, you can start ordering your COVID tests from covidtests.gov. So people who are unable to find tests locally can order them through this government site, Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, Central City Neighborhood Association will be having an in-person meeting at the Birmingham Public Library, and that is going to be at 6:00 PM. Please contact my office or check out the Central City Neighborhood Association website for more information. Also, next Monday afternoon at 2:00 PM, we'll be having our next Transportation Committee meeting. If you have any submissions for that meeting, please make sure to get those in prior to Wednesday of this week. Thank you. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Ms. Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo what Counselor Clark said. You know, I was out, oh, this Monday and went by Third Avenue Shell and participated in the gas giveaway, and then I saw people moving around in the Five Point West area. But I really want to kinda like send a message out around dumping. We have a major dumping problem in this city. And so, and just to hear Counselor Clark say the level of people that came out to, you know, help clean up. People in neighborhoods should take pride in where they live at. It's not okay to use your neighborhood as a dump site. I have gotten a lot of pictures like in the last couple of weeks and have more that I need to get over today, but can you imagine, you know, what you're creating? You're creating a two-fold monster, a rodent issue, which most of these neighborhoods are plagued with rodents. And so you gotta take pride in where you live at. I mean, dumping is not okay. Make sure you put your trash out on the days that it needs to go out, put it in a trashcan, because we, you know, this is an issue that we gotta address. I often ride around like in neighborhoods, and my staff could tell you, like, when I go get some coffee, and I'm like just overwhelmed with the things that I see. But I want to challenge the constituents, the people that live in these neighborhoods, please stop dumping in your neighborhoods. I mean, you're gonna have, you got, you're gonna have a rodent problem, you're gonna create, we're gonna be, this city's gonna be in, we're gonna be like a baby New York, you know, with these rodents. So it's just not okay. And I'm sure that the Council, you know, will address this and, and get some measures in place to address dumpers. But kudos to Counselor Clark. You've set the tone for us to, you know, to get out and really just engage, you know, and as Counsel Abbott says, we're gonna be out, you know, in these neighborhoods and challenging, you know, people that live in these neighborhoods and clergy people that come out and, and just take charge. But East Thomas has a neighborhood meeting tonight at 6:00 PM. Evergreen Neighborhood Association Call is also tonight at 6:00 PM. Smithfield Estates Neighborhood Association Meeting is tonight. South Prep Neighborhood Meeting is tonight, and Ensley Neighborhood Meeting is on this Thursday. The next Public Safety Committee meeting will be held Tuesday, January 25 at 3:30 PM here in the Council Chambers. Submission should be sent to my office, to Brandon McCray, that meeting, for that meeting by Thursday, January 20, no later than 4:00 PM. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Tate. Madam Protem.
Thank you, Madam President. I know Counselor Moore isn't here, but I saw he had a cleanup in Norwood. He had a lot of participants as well. Some of my friends are out there, so I want to give kudos to him. And Counselor Clark, look at you, leading the charge. I see you, girl. But the PICC is going to work with Keep Birmingham Beautiful. And Counselor Woods, I still want to talk to you about that. We're gonna figure out some type of campaign across all the districts. KBB has all the resources and tools we kinda need and what we really ask for, so just to make it simpler. I do think it's a, it's an educational component. But if y'all would please stop dumping, that would help out. Also, please learn where your garbage is being picked up, because a lot of these dumping sites are people putting things out thinking like, oh, the City of Birmingham is gonna pick it up, and then we have to politely tell them, no, that's not where your garbage gets picked up. So just want to say that. The Graymont Neighborhood will meet via teleconference at 4:30 PM today. The call-in number is 720-740-9717, and the access code is 5599688. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will meet Monday, January 24 at 3:30 PM, right here in the Council Chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, January 19 by noon. Email submissions to laquita.wilson@birminghamal.gov and kevin.owens@birminghamal.gov. The regularly scheduled PICC meeting will be held Tuesday, February 1 at 2:00 PM in the Council Chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, January 26 by noon. Email submissions to laquita.wilson@birminghamal.gov. The District Six Office would like to congratulate Mr. Fred Armstead for 44 years of dedicated service to Alcohol and Drug Abuse Treatment Centers, Incorporated. Happy birthday to one of my favorites, Ms. Crenshaw of Woodland Park Neighborhood. She had a birthday celebration on Sunday. And lastly, the District Six Office would like to extend a special prayer for Mr. Alvin Washington, the Vice President of Woodland Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, and I join in offering those prayers for Mr. Washington. He's a member of my church, so we'll all be praying for his recovery. Just to give my comments for District Seven, we do have three neighborhood meetings this week. We have the Industrial Center Neighborhood. They'll meet via conference call at 1:00 PM on Thursday. The Germania Park Neighborhood Association will also meet via conference call this Thursday at 6:00 PM. And then I'll be joining Counselor Clark at the Green Acres Neighborhood Meeting this evening at 6:30. We do share portions of that neighborhood between both of our districts. Again, kudos to Counselor Clark, and kudos to everyone, again, who participated in a day of service yesterday. I am excited to hear that we'll be working with Keep Birmingham Beautiful, how as we grow and want to have more of these type of events, they can be a part of that. They're already a great integral part of that, but just how we fine-tune that process and help organizations that want to help us with this situation. And not to beat a dead horse to death, but just the fact that I know we all are plagued with the amount of dumping, the trash that we see in our neighborhoods. And I just want to caution residents, don't be a part of the problem. Please be aware of your bulk trash pickup days and where you put that bulk trash, because I had residents in one particular area, and they were complaining about the fact that the bulk trash and how it had not been picked up. And come to find out, they weren't aware of what their bulk trash cycle was. So by putting that trash out beyond the day when that trash is to be picked up, and it's sitting there for another three weeks, you're not supposed to put that trash out until it's time for your pickup. So, and then there are areas within District Seven where people have created these spots that they put bulk trash. And then I go to the neighborhood, and me think, we need to pick that up. And they go, oh, no, we want it there. So, but you think of when you're passing through the neighborhood, what that trash looks like. So just some things that we need to work with and deal with. So we'll ask all residents to be mindful of that. And again, thank you, Counselors, for the work that you're doing in your districts to try to work with our residents to eliminate those problems. Counselor Woods, we'll let you close out our comments, and if you'll just speak on some of the items that you wanted to bring to our attention of how we may fine-tune this process. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Madam President. I know we've been kinda talking about just some ways to streamline some things. And so one of the things we looked at is possibly pre-recording announcements. And so what that does is basically allow you to work with PIO up until Monday at 1:00 to pre-record your announcements. You've seen the caliber of videos they make. I guess, Kim, you can play mine here just a second. But basically, we would play our announcements immediately after adjournment. And so that could, depending on what kind of day it is, that could save from 15 to 45 minutes on our council meetings and just add some efficiency, just, you know, the number of people from the mayor's staff and the council staff that have to be on hand for these meetings. So just something to consider. We'll be piloting it. If anybody is interested in, in doing that, you can just connect with PIO, connect with me, we'll make sure you get the process. And I'll just let Kim go ahead and play that District One announcement video, just so you get a feel for what's possible, but is really anything you want it to be. All right, hey, everybody. Counselor Clinton Woods here. Got a few announcements for District One. First off, we got a couple of neighborhood meetings. Sun Valley Neighborhood Association meets tonight via Zoom at 6:30 PM. And next Monday, on the 24th, the Huffman Neighborhood Association meets also via Zoom. And so really excited, got some great things going on here in District One. Standing here at Grayson Park, and we're in the middle of some renovations and upgrades at the park, adding parking. We're standing here on the new resurfaced basketball court, looks great, adding a pavilion. And so a lot of things happening, some playground upgrades. Also, standing just across from our new traffic light out here in the district over at Smith Middle School. And so we're just continually looking for ways to upgrade and improve things we're doing in the district. Just a few other things. Hey, remember when you're moving through our area, you know, don't litter. You're in the city, just save that trash, throw it away at the gas station. Let's kinda work together to keep this community clean. And so we'll keep you up to date. As always, be litter free.
And again, this is just something we're proposing. It's not mandatory. We can talk about it as a group and just let Counselor Protem and Counselor Woods and I know your thoughts about that. And then we know things may change, so even if you do that video, and then you have things that are occurring in your district, or especially when it comes to resolutions of sympathy and those type things, how we maybe want to offer those as part of that process, because I know things do happen. So we'll, we'll go ahead, and we can discuss this at committee or the whole if you all would like, if you, or you could just talk to Counselor Protem and I. Yes, Ms. Clark?
I was wondering, so not to dismiss the proposal, because I'm, I'm open to considering it, but I was wondering if we could also talk about, maybe get an update on what's going on with the, there was a refuse collection pilot with issuing cans for certain routes or something? I just remember it from the ACE class, when I took the ACE class. So, so could we talk about strategies for, you know, beyond the KBB campaign?
Yeah.
You know, could we, could the city issue cans to residents? Because I think if people had cans to put it in, it might help. And I know we do publish this exhaustive list of bulk trash pickup days, but do people get it? We used to send it to the households, and I know that was very expensive. But I'm just saying, something's not clicking, obviously. And maybe we could have a little strategy session where we like kinda throw everything out.
So that's what the February meeting for PICC is, to do that. And I'll invite you and the rest of the Counselors for that. Because that's a little bit easier to do that than to consume committee, the whole meeting time.
That's fine. I just want to, I want a venue.
Yeah, so Chief Mitchell and I have been talking about it. COVID has slowed a lot of products and things down, from wood to this. We will be looking at using some of the American Rescue Plan money, because that falls under that, to help get a trashcan for every resident and recycling. But it is in the works. It's just COVID has kinda slowed things down.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor.
Also, I forgot, yes, it was very expensive to mail out, because I know when I was little, they used to do that. they used to do that, so I guess we're just going to have to figure out something else that's cost-efficient for us to talk versus.
Lot of captains passing out flyers or something.
Well, and I was going to say, I know everyone does not, is not connected to the internet or does not have capabilities, but currently you can log in on the city website, and you can add your email, and you do get those push notifications, which do include the bulk trash pickup dates that comes about, but of course you have to have those capabilities, and I know that's not a hundred percent across the city, but there are some means of getting that information, so.
Yeah, can you remind, I know you said February first, what time for PIC?
It's at two o'clock.
Two o'clock, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Abbott, did you have your hand up?
Well, I did, I was, I mean, it's probably not appropriate for right now, but has anybody else in their district noticed that landlords are beginning to construct holders for their garbage cans on the city right-of-way, so that they don't have to take their garbage cans in? Is anybody else seeing that? Because my, my district is chock-a-block with these people who are actually building a holder for their garbage cans on the city right-of-way, and who is in charge of doing something about that? Because I'm sure it's not legal to construct on the city right-of-way.
Chief, do you have any?
We were not aware of that. Councillor Abbott, that would be a code enforcement violation, so in any area that you see that happening, or if you have specific addresses, if you could share that with us, we'll have our code enforcement team go out and investigate, because that should not be happening.
Oh wow, it's going to take a long time to get all those addresses, they could just drive around the south side, and they would, their hair would curl, but I'll see if I can't start a, a process. We've done it before, and the city never did anything, so we can do it again, because there are fresh new ones cropping up now, you know, and I guess they saw the old dilapidated ones and thought that they would put a nice new one, so we're just, it's getting worse and worse, and I'm surprised that no one in the city has ever noticed, because they're just cropping up everywhere, but if it's only my district, you know, we'll just have to get, get a program going.
Thank you, we'll be sure to get that information over to, and see what code enforcement can do. Councillor Pro Tem, you did have councillor Williams.
Yes, I noticed councillor Williams wasn't in here, but he has two announcements. Crestwood South Neighborhood Meeting will be via Zoom on Monday, January twenty-fourth at six thirty PM, and then Huffman Neighborhood Meeting will be via Zoom on Monday, January twenty-fourth at seven PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We want to thank our officers who are on duty today, Cedric Pinkert with City Hall, Samuel Coleman, South Precinct, and Emerson Oldham with South, and so we thank you for serving us today. Do I have an entertaining motion for adjournment?
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you councillors, we adjourn.